Mr. Henning.
Here.
Mr. Madrell.
Here.
Mr. Haas.
Here.
Mr. Wilkerson. Mrs. Towers.
Here.
Mr. Crumper.
Looks like that's the form. Let's go ahead and stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, into the republic which was established, one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as strong. Tonight, Angie Miller is out of town, so she's gonna be on the phone here, participating in the meeting tonight. Okay, any agenda changes?
None.
I assume none. Public comments? This is time where public have any like to address the board. We'll do it this time. Okay. We need to approve the April 20th, 2017 minutes. Need a motion for that. Motion by Mr. Henning. Seconded by Mr. Madrell. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Now let's look down to canvas election results.
We received the official election results. I'll read those. Dennis Haas, 2,717. Angie Miller, 1,664. Victoria Staub, 1,569. And Mike Reynolds, 1,564. It is necessary for the board to accept those and approve those election results.
Any motion for that?
Yeah.
Seconded by Mr. Madrell. Seconded by Mr. Henning. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passes. Okay, now we're down to item seven. Are you going to say again? Adjourn. Sinadaii.
This is the process where we adjourn the current meeting that we have, and so that we can go ahead and begin seating the new board.
Okay, and as much as there's no further business coming for the board, a motion for adjournment, sinadaii, is in order. Need a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Haas. Seconded by Mr. Henning. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passes. Okay, at this time, exiting Board of Education members will now yield their seats. Newly elected Board members, Angie Miller, Michael Reynolds, Victoria Staub, should take their seats at the board table.
There are science seats.
Okay, it's down to the open offices for elected members.
Open office, I thought it would be a good gesture moving forward to have all the members stand and take the open office. There is a kind of a breakdown of the open office in your packet. If you want to find that follow along, or I try to break it down so it's a little bit easier. So if you would stand, and I guess it might be appropriate to raise your right hand. Aye, and then you'll state your name, you solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office as member of the Board of Education, Freeburg Committee, High School District 77, in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. I further swear that I shall respect taxpayers' interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek hearing before the board, while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual, and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting and I shall abide by a majority decision to the board while retaining the right to seek changes and such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. Thank you, congratulations.
Want to congratulate a new board member? Welcome to the big chairs. Okay, number 10. Need to appoint the President Procham. We need to appoint Mr. Frickin as our President Procham. Need a motion for that. A motion by Mr. Parrish.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Reynolds. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passes.
Okay, Board of Education election of officer results will be recorded by Jane Meath, FCHS District Secretary. Election of Board President. Nominations are now in order for the office of Board President. So if anybody would like to nominate a board member for Board President.
I nominate Doug.
Okay, is there any other nominations at this time? All right. So we have two nominations, so all in favor of, and we'll do this by a raise of hands, if you would please. All in favor of Doug Parrish for the office of Board President, please raise your hand at this time.
I raise my hand again.
Okay, Angie, so we have four currently. Angie voting for Doug. All right, all in favor of Dennis Haas for the office of Board President, please raise your hand. So Secretary reports, the vote is Doug Parrish with four votes and Dennis Haas with three votes. Okay. I gotta find the right words to say. As a result of a majority vote, of four votes to three, I declare that Doug Parrish is elected as Board President Now at this time, we need to take nominations for the position of Vice President. Any nominations?
I nominate Dean Gauk.
Dean Gauk nominates Dean Gauk. Are there any other nominations at this time? Okay, Dean Gauk being the only candidate nominated for the office of Vice President. The Chair hereby declares Dean Gauk elected by acclamation and directs the Secretary to so record in the minutes. Dean Gauk can now are new Vice President. The next order of business is to take nominations for the Board Secretary, office of Board Secretary. Any nominations?
I nominate Victoria Staub.
Mike Reynolds nominates Victoria Staub. I'll second that. Is there any other nominations at this time? Victoria Staub being the only candidate nominated for the office of Board Secretary, elected by acclamation and directs the Secretary to so record in the minutes. That's thing is number 14. Need to appoint the District Treasurer. The District Treasurer is the position that signs off on critical financial records of FCHS District 77 to verify their accuracy and appropriateness. It is typically a person who is different from the person who prepared said records and/or reports. Diane Schaefer is the current Business Director at FCHS District 77. She creates the documents and reports. It has been customary for the Superintendent Secretary to serve as the District Treasurer. So we need a recommendation at this time. Or a motion, sorry.
I have moved to appoint Jane Meath as Secretary.
Okay. Jane Meath motion. Victoria seconded. All is in favor of Jane Meath being the District Treasurer. Say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Next point of business is to appoint the Recording Secretary for the Board of Education. The district's tradition has been for the Superintendent Secretary to serve as Recording Secretary for Board of Education meetings. The major task of the Recording Secretary is to attend Board of Education meetings and create minutes from the meeting. These minutes are then included in the next month's meeting packet and approved as part of the Cassano Agenda item on the meeting's agenda. The Recording Secretary also prepares the formal documentation for signatures by the Board of Education President and Secretary at each Board of Education meeting and secures these signatures on the respective documents. Mrs. Jane Meath has served in this capacity for the entirety of her work as the Superintendent Secretary. So we need a motion for the Secretary for the Board of Education. So moved for Madrell for Miss Meath to be the Secretary. Seconded by Dennis. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item, number 16. Approve Board of Education meeting schedule. This is typical annual business is to, once the new board is seated, to approve the remaining Board of Education meeting dates and then also all of the 2017-18 meeting dates. The only change is the June date was changed to the 15th. Previously, all the meetings were scheduled on the third Thursday, with the exception of if it landed close to the 15th. Our current board, I'm sorry, our current bookkeeper isn't concerned by that. That date works well for other reasons to come in the board packet. So we've changed that date to 15th. And then there's two meetings that are changed to days other than that. One is for the November meeting, which conflicts with the annual ISB Conference. And the other is the December meeting that is changed to make sure that we have enough days to file our tax levy after meetings out. So the dates are, if you haven't got them, I apologize. At this time, we need a motion to approve the meeting schedule for 2017-2018.
I'm not gonna close this schedule this year, but I'd like to look at in the future, eventually doing a closed session first, followed by the regular meeting, just so that...
That doesn't affect the vote here? That's something that...
Well, this is time here, and we probably won't do it earlier. I think six thirty, so that's what I'm thinking.
Well, if we approve the meetings at seven, then they have to be at seven.
Right.
Okay.
I'm not worried about that.
Okay.
See, in the future, I'd like to look at that.
Got it. Gotcha. Any other discussion? Okay. We need a motion to approve the meeting schedule for 2017-2018.
Some move, Dad's presenting.
Motion by Mr. Haas. Seconded by Mr. Reynolds. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next item is number 17. The approval of moving the sidewalk project to bid process. So this is something we've been working on for several months. There is quite a few handouts that were given to you in your board packet with pictures, the Help Life Save Amendment. It has still not been signed by the State Superintendent. But when I talked with the architect from FGM, that is not necessary to move this forward. The only thing you would have to do for that signature, you couldn't do for the signature, is actually do any work. And so in order to try to get this done this summer, I put the estimate, they estimate that it's a $55,000 job with a couple different 10% contingencies. One for overages, one for the architecture fee. The total cost coming out to $66,000. The architecture firm does not actually do any work to drawing the plans and putting the bid specs together until the board approves it. And then the State Superintendent actually signs off, because that's when the money starts to actually, the bank starts to turn. So that's when the bills start, is when they start doing their work. So I don't think I had any questions about that. Any questions or discussion on this? Okay, we need a motion to approve starting the bid process. Can you list any of the bids? Motion by Dean Gauk. Seconded by Ray Madrell. All is in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next item, approve putting kitchen management up to bid. This is something, again, we've been working on probably since January. The actual bid packet has been approved by the ISBE with the new dates. The dates are listed on here. Approve it hopefully tonight. Advertise for bid on the 11th. We have to put that in papers. We have a pre-bid meeting on the 19th, public bid opening on the 8th. Award the contract, this is one of the reasons I wanted to move that June 15th meeting up, so that we had enough time. Once we got the contract awarded, that the kitchen management companies could have enough time to start the process of managing the kitchen. Any discussion, questions at this time? We need a motion to approve moving the kitchen management program through the bid process as presented. Motion by Ray Madrell. Seconded by Dean Gauk. All is in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number 19. Approve FCHS participation in SWIC running start. This obviously has been a big topic of discussion for a long time. We're at the point now where I believe that there's a consensus among Board members to participate in this. I've expressed my opinions to the board, and I will move forward. And I think there are three options for us, the board, to consider right now. First option would be to simply say no to the running start. The second option would be to allow, we currently, in my investigation, there are three students that I'm gonna call in the pipeline. There's a student that's currently gonna be involved in running start next year. One of the students that was involved last year has made the decision to return to high school. And then I believe there are two other students that have already done the paperwork, where they have worked with SWIC, done the paperwork, they've taken the test, they've scheduled their classes. So those three students are currently in the pipeline. So the second option, in my opinion, is to allow those students to participate in the 17-18 school year. And then the third option is to make it a full-blown option for any student interested at Freeburg. When I talked to Valerie Thaxen, and this is in your handouts, she gave me 13 questions that the district needs to answer before she feels like they're ready to start the running start program. My concern is the timing. With the different meetings that are held, the different testing dates, then the retest dates, I estimate that we're looking at anywhere from about four to five weeks before the students would be able to schedule classes. At that point in time, I'm concerned about the availability of the classes that they would be able to get at SWIC, and the conflicts that may arise if they participate, which most schools allow the students to participate, if they participate in extracurricular events conflict. Because SWIC does not allow students to miss their classes. They're unexcused if they miss their classes for high school extracurricular. So those are my opinion, the three things that I think are options. If I'm gonna make a recommendation, my recommendation would be option two. And then we could form a committee and try to answer all these questions, figure out what we're gonna do with some of these other things, and then go full bore for the 17-18-19 school year. So those are my thoughts. If anybody has any questions, I'd be more happy to answer them. Any questions or discussion at this time?
So you're saying you have a question? You're saying that you would only have it for just those three students?
For right now, because those three students have already done all the paperwork to attend SWIC in August. It would just be a matter of us signing off on that form that was in the packet, the agreement between us and SWIC that says we participate, that we would just say that it's just for those three. If there are others that have done the work, and I don't know about it, then I would obviously think they told students. But I spoke with Valerie Thaxen, who runs the program. Those are the only two that she identified, that are not currently involved in the running start and have done the paperwork to be involved in running start in August.
So there are people that are participating through homeschool that would like to come back to school.
There are one. And that was just a verbal, that they would like to come back to school, and it was simply they wanna be in the school environment. It was not a negative towards running start. It was just they wanted to be in the school environment. And I believe one is graduating from SWIC, and then another is planning on returning to SWIC. So I think there's three.
There's one currently there, and two...
There's three currently there. One will graduate, one's coming back, one's gonna return. And two more going.
Two more going.
That would be a total of three.
Along with that discussion, do we need to decide on what level of participation or pay at the school, and are the parents would have to?
Yes, but that is, I already checked that off, to say that the parents will pay SWIC directly. That I don't wanna be a collection agency for students for this. And I think that's become more and more popular. One of the other things, and this was something I looked, when I was looking back through documents, was, you know, what money do we lose or not lose? Every school that I talked to, all the superintendents that I talked to, they actually claim each of these students for their ADA, average daily attendance. So we would still get their, the money from the state for them. Now SWIC also gets the money from the state. So we're paying twice for students. So, and I said, okay, what happens if the state finds out? They said, don't tell the state. So the worst-case scenario is the state would come in and audit us, and we would have to pay that money back. If they say that since that student doesn't attend. But currently, every superintendent that responded to me said they claim those students. So I don't think that we are risking losing money by those students attending. I think we'll still get our general state aid for those students that are attending. It's not a huge difference. We may get less than that from the state. So, you know, figure, I don't know, 10 grand, worst-case scenario, per year. I guess.
If three people participate, is that true?
Yeah, somewhere around there.
I still think it should be criteria-based. I think that I don't see the reason to limit. I understand that these struggle, but if they really wanna program and hustle to get there, I would like to see it open completely with criteria. I agree we need to have a committee, we'll get the criteria set.
And that committee's gonna have to meet within about 48 hours and figure this all out, because she has to hold a public meeting for all students. Once she holds a meeting, a week after that is the first test, and one or two weeks after that is the second test. And then we need to decide if the student doesn't pass the test, can they take remediation class to pass the test? They have to take a class at SWIC, a study skills test they have to take. So can they take that in the summer? They do offer a little session in August. So I just...
I don't like that play.
I don't? Got it.
Mike, I had a conversation with Grayson about this also, and he's called one of our superintendents. And it's not smooth sailing. You do something before all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. And I said something to Doug, and I think he gave me great help. You know, my still feel something is, is I'm inclined to go ahead and go for it when everything is in place, and nobody's smart. And nobody, you know, faces stiff room. And it's not gonna, and we're still gonna accommodate our people now, and open up everybody, you know, in September. I've worked hard for this thing. And I wish my parents, they like, from what Greg told me, so we should have a session with one. So we're shooting a smooth takeoff and flight. Jumping in when people are ready, and I'm not doing this thing. I also understood it. I was just aware of it.
Sure.
I hate to limit the program. There's some transfers in in July or August from the military area. Do you want to transfer now? You wanna tell them no? I have concerns about that.
I mean, we can say yes, and we can do this, but then there's a lot of questions to be answered. In my experience, when you go into things without planning ahead, you're asking for trouble. But I've been in trouble before.
And I think I remember that seniors could do just one year.
Correct. Yes.
If we just, if we would start it now, which is three, and then get it full-blown, these juniors this year that are missing out could still do it as a senior.
Yes. They could start, it's called something else.
Yeah, something just a little different.
They can start either after their sophomore year or after their junior year.
Do we know the enrollment schedule for the enrollment of classes? When the majority of students are able to enroll, and then when are students who qualify or might be interested?
Typically, this is done January, February.
Okay.
And they try to finalize it. The running start students actually, according to Valerie, get the first choice of classes before the other SWIC students get them.
But many of those classes are, some positions in those classes are already filled.
I don't know that. I don't know that. I was told by one parent that they needed to really register their student soon, or they named this out on classes, the classes that they want. So, you know, we're talking about if we go through all the steps that we need to go through, now we're pushing it back another four weeks. So my concern is that we're not gonna have everything decided, and we're gonna put our students at a disadvantage, and we're gonna have to make them make a decision of whether or not they wanna participate in extracurricular or not. Because if I'm, you know, a baseball coach, and I find out one of my kids can't make practice every Tuesday, I'm probably not keeping him. And so that's, you know, that's a tough decision, you know, to put somebody through, whether it's a coach, whether it's a kid, whether it's a parent. And I think it's better to have all those things ironed out ahead.
And there are, there's sets classes that students have to take at SWIC, just as there are here, in order to meet the criteria for our graduation.
Yes.
Diploma.
Yes, it's called the crosswalk curriculum. And so we would have to set up our crosswalk curriculum. We would have to set up the classes, of the SWIC classes that they are permitted to take to get our, to meet our qualifications for our diploma.
All right, and if they were unable to get into those classes?
Then they don't get our diploma. I mean, then they're a violation of the running start agreement. So they, I mean, they have to. We would set up, there's a lot of flexibility. So they, I mean, they have to, we would set up, there's a lot of flexibility in some of the classes they could take. You know, they have to take like English one, English and 101 and 102, they have to take those. But then there's a whole list of about 15 English classes they could take to meet the junior, well, the senior level English, because the 101, 102 would be senior year. So there's a lot of flexibility, but we would have to define what that is.
Can we, can we get any kind of verification or agreement from Valerie, was this lady's name, then our students would be able to take the classes that they need? If they run into difficulty with their schedule, that they would be allowed into, say, a full class in order to meet those criteria?
Well, that's, that's the concern, that there's not going to be classes at the time that they may need it.
I understand that, but if we're, if we're trying to, if we're trying to open participation and there's limited class space, does she have the ability to offer a guarantee that our students that are interested would still be allowed to get into those classes that they need so that they meet the criteria for the program?
She does not have the power to create extra sections.
Can I, wait a minute. Like a lot of faculty, we're humanized, there's a contract. And that contract defines load, numbers of classes taught, number of students in the classes. And a lot of people would have to get together and agree for that to happen. But by contract, there's a number, and that's, that's a, that's a definite number that we work there for. I'm not saying it can't be done, but it's not, you know, it's not because we want it, it's going to happen.
Well, this can be looked like I'm going to be a learning model, that's my...
But that hurts our students. I guess my point is, when you get ready to run the race, you condition yourself, you work out, and you step, sorry, all the conditions optimal. And this doesn't look like all conditions are optimal. I would even go so far as to say is if we make, if we do this right, I am, what you guys.
Well, in light of the...
I don't think this is, jumping, jumping, jumping this start is an awkward thing to do, a risky thing to do for a student.
In light of the questions that we have with the beginning of the program, I'm inclined to agree with Mr. Brad. Better to do a limited initial and prepare the program correctly for follow-on student. And I don't, I don't really think we're talking a large number of people. I don't expect five, 10 additional people to come out of the woodwork and, and charge to SWIC. I think it's going to be a very limited participation in the program anyway.
Well, I agree. I think that we need to set it up right. I think we've got a chance to get it going. I think we get a start. And we start with the limited number of people that have already done it, set up a committee, get these questions answered to where we feel good about it, to where we feel like this is going in the right direction. And like I said, Chuck, you said earlier, these people are, these kids are going to be juniors, they still, they won't miss out on that experience, they just won't get the two, the two years there. But I think we need to get out front of the door and get started, and that's my feeling.
What about the people that are homeschool currently? Because it's probably something we don't, I know there's a neighbor mind that you probably don't have a clue about.
Well, I mean, if I go by what I said earlier, if they have taken all the steps and they're already in, and it's just a matter of signing off, saying that they're, you know, if they're already going to SWIC through this, in my opinion, is we just include them as a Freeburg High School student in the running start program, because they, because they're already in the pipeline. I know of three. If there's more, I think as long as they've are already in the program, or they've already taken the steps with SWIC and taken the test and have done all the steps to do it as a homeschool, like the two that I'm talking about, then I think they should be permitted to go in. But I think, you know, I think there's just so many questions that need to be answered, I just think it would be better for us. So if there is somebody, if you know somebody, make sure they contact us and let us know.
I know I do not have a vote in this. I would, and I'll work whatever you decide to do, but I would greatly appreciate the chance to facilitate these. Once you make the decision, facilitating this is going to fall on the staff, the guidance counselors, team with the students, myself, Mr. Brad, to work with the coaches and the extracurriculars, to try to make all this cooperative. I know this is a huge decision, and I, parents, it supports them, that they're getting the education they want, but I also, again, this comes back into how we're going to handle this every day at school. And I would greatly appreciate the chance for this to be set up correctly in order to have that chance to do this the right way every day at this school. I think we do need to talk to the guidance counselors, they're going to have to talk about curriculum, the student that is coming back here. We didn't have anything in place for the student to come back as far as are they going to get a full credit for what they took? Are they going to get a half credit? You know, those are decisions that are very important, because if we make the wrong decision, a student comes back, they don't have enough credits to graduate, and we don't want to be in that position. Luckily, we've come to a compromise with that parent through our guidance counselors, that that student's still going to graduate on time. I just don't want to see anybody get burned, kids-wise, coaches, class sponsors, parents. Again, every day in the school, dealing with that, it's, it could be fairly delicate. It's very easy to say yes, go for it, but then what are the repercussions if we don't have everything in place? Again, I don't have a vote, but for someone that's going to have to be looking at this every day and working with these, the parents, the kids, I really hope it's in place first. And I would look forward also to talking to the students that are going to running start, working with their parents, how's the experience going, what can we do to make this easier, what's working for you, what's not, and also include that in reports, come back, and just try to do this the right way. If we're going to make it successful, I'd really like to see us do it the right way instead of backtracking. So, thanks.
Well, sir.
I only have two minutes left.
Okay. I think discussion, discussion, we need a motion at this time. We have a motion.
A motion that Freeburg participates on a limited basis for the students already in the pipeline, and we look for full participation to anybody in the 17-18 school year.
Motion by Mr. Haas. I'll second that.
I'm done. We got motion for the headwinds, yes? Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Two nays. Motion passes. That's it? And that's it. We need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh. By Angie, second by Dean. All those in favor, say aye. Sure. Thank you very much for attending the meeting tonight.